Good evening. I'll call the Brandon Select Board to order at 7:00. Thank you all for attending tonight, whether in person or on Zoom. First item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. The agenda was posted as required. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
Motion in a second. Are there any changes to be made? I have one minor one. I'd like to add item 2B to revise the minutes of June 14th. And I can talk about that at the time if that's okay. Anything else? If not all in favor of adopting the agenda as we've just amended it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Item 2, let's take them separately. Approval of the board minutes of July 12th.
Make motion to approve. Chairman.
Motion in a second from Mr. Coolidge and Mr. Wyman. Does anyone note any errors or omissions in the minutes as submitted? I did not. All in favor of adopting these minutes as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It's unanimous. The ayes have it. So for item B, there was a request from a towns person that we look again at the minutes of June 14th. And I'm on page 3 in the minutes of June 14th on the 1, 2, 3, on the fourth paragraph. So the minutes refer to Mr. Giles talking about some signs in Central Park. And we, in the meeting, that sign was referred to as belonging to Foley Brothers. In fact, it doesn't belong to Foley Brothers. It belongs to Foley, Foley's Taco and Bean. So there was a request that we revise the minutes to reflect that. So is that, Mr. Giles?
That's what I intended.
That was your intent. Is there any objection to revising the minutes to remove the reference to Foley Brothers and replace it with a reference there on page 3 to Foley's Taco and Bean regarding the sign in Central Park? If no objections, all in favor of making that change to the June 14th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Thank you for that. Item 3 is the town manager's report. Mr. Appleton, please.
This is my report for the weeks of July 12th and July 19th. I'm going to add a couple more things on here at the end, just some things that happened later this week. Presale has been completed on the 389 New Road property for the FEMA buyout. The owner has accepted the value and we will be ordering the title work hopefully next week. Waiting for hazard mitigation to get back to us. A Green Lantern Solar yearly true-up credit for fiscal year '21 is $2,190.99. We're doing good with that. We're seeing our monthly electricity bill is lower. It's been a good thing. I've been working with the BLSG and State concerning larva side grant funding. There will be more on this at the next select board meeting and it's really been an ongoing issue right now. We've received a complaint, concern from a resident that was feeling that we did not support the animal control officer and supply them with the necessary tools needed for the job. I would like to assure all of you that any equipment our ACO has requested, has been granted, and we will continue to do so. And just another thing on there too, that Tim, our ACO, actually attended a VLCT webinar last week on dog, animal, some, one of the dog control or something. I really can't remember what it was at this point. So we're throwing all this stuff out and he's taking advantage of it, so it's kind of weird. Center Street, Pro Street Stormwater mitigation projects are hopefully starting this week. We're a week behind due to all the rain and the corner square parking area construction will start once the stormwater work is completed. It's the same contractor that's doing both. Delinquent balances for taxes, water, and sewer. I have those there. I can spiel that if you want. Our taxes right now are about $351,000, which is pretty common. It's about 10% of our budget. We did talk to our attorney today about doing the letters to go forward with tax sales for probably this fall. Sewer is $208,000 and now that we are collecting water, it's $160,000. So we're actually not in bad shape considering the pandemic. Pretty average. So a couple other things I wanted to add on. Sean had come to me about our backhoe that we've had for a long, long time and I know we've put a bunch of money into it. We're seeking quotes to replace the backhoe. We've talked about maybe getting an excavator, but now we're looking at this thing, the backhoe is a little more versatile and where we need to go. So hopefully we'll have some numbers. We did get a quote in from one vendor already, but we're really going to need to look at doing something with this. This thing's getting tired. It's been around for a long time. We're doing more work in-house, so hopefully more to come on that. And the other thing I wanted to talk about too, actually I guess I could bring this up. I think we might have a, we might have. Well, Shade Tree. Well, I'll bring this out of Shade Tree because it's not really that. So there's been some discussion about having a tree inventory program in town. And so I had done a little research with the State to see what was available. And Joanna Garden, who I've worked with in the past on some other things, I think maybe Sigma Six, when we started that with tree stuff on that, had a great conversation with her last week about doing a tree inventory and the Shade Tree program, which we can talk about after in the meeting. And they actually, they've got this phenomenal setup with like a GIS app where you can go around and really, you know, go point to point and do whatever. They're willing to come and train someone, you know, if someone wants to volunteer for it. That, you know, we could get them set up to do this. And I talked to Wayne about it. Wayne was hoping to be here tonight, but his progress business is going like wildfire right now and he just couldn't get away. So I'd like to pursue this and maybe talk to some more folks in town who have approached us about tree committee or whatever. I think this could be a good thing for the town to let the State help us out. Is there, you know, seasoned veterans on this and really move forward or?
And what is the, what's the group that Joanna's with?
Ah, it's one through A and R. I can't remember if it's a tree specialist or one of the arborists or something.
But one of the departments there.
Yeah. But she's more knuckle and again, had a great conversation with her. And I think that, you know, moving forward, this would be a good thing for us too, considering we just planted almost 200 trees in town, so.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any questions of the town manager from the board? Or from the public? Any questions for the town manager? Chief Perkell?
Not really a question. Just a comment. I heard town manager mention that the animal control officer signed us for a webinar from VLCT for training and I just, for what it's worth, I just had an officer request training at the Academy for there's two dates for Level 1 and Level 2 Animal Control Training at the Academy. One in October, Level 2 in November, that he had been approved to go to. I checked their site, but they just don't have the dates specific yet that are advertised on there, but I wanted to forward that to the animal control officer too, that as a humane officer, he can attend that as well. So as soon as I get those dates, I'll forward those to him.
Thank you, Chief. And are there, are there officers in the department already who have taken that kind of thing at the Academy?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Other questions or comments for the town manager? Me, me, Rob.
Just, I was the one that filed a complaint with the select board, the town manager, and the police chief about the lack of tools for the animal control officer. And I had not heard anything from anyone, so upset that it assured me that I would get an email response. It did not come through. So I was just wondering what actual tools we are providing for the animal control officer these days.
So far it's been whatever Tim has requested. And we've done, we didn't receive any, any equipment from the previous animal control officer before that. So we're sort of starting out with a blank slate and I appreciate the, you know, pointing out things that we should have for this position. I actually thought Tim was going to call you back. Someone I had a conversation shortly after your email to discuss further, so. But we'll, we'll get whatever we need and it's always been there. I did talk to the Humane Society like last Thursday or Friday about the key for the Brown building because we never had a key, so.
May I have a?
Yeah, Tim and I will make a trip down there and, you know, meet the folks and pick it up, so. But moving forward, we're going to do whatever we need to do to make sure that Tim has the equipment to do his job.
I'm just not sure that Tim knows, needs, excuse me, knows all the equipment that he needs.
But that's, no, we appreciate that, you know, there's other things out here that we don't even know about.
Maybe, would you have a list of suggested equipment that you think an animal control officer might be able to make good use of?
Well, for one thing, the first thing I put it out in the email was that catwalk go-ups would be a wonderful thing. When we were handling the dog, the other day again at the Humane Society, he brought out his wood stove gloves. And that's all he had. And that is not going to help you at all when you have an aggressive dog.
Yeah, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but in fact, if you wanted to generate a list, it might be very interesting to, to use as a reference for, you know, because, because you're so involved with the, you know, the Humane Society. I get the feeling you have a unique perspective into how the different animal control officers that are in our region work. And maybe you have a higher awareness of the kinds of equipment they typically have.
I'd be glad to sit down with Tim or anybody and help work out this. Yeah.
Could you?
Honestly, I mean, I'm concerned about the animal control officer. I don't want to see him get hurt. With me doing the feral cat program, I have been bit by feral cats enough times and ended up in an emergency room. And I take care of my own medical bills, but his would be covered by the town. And as a taxpayer, I want that to be minimized as much as possible. And so I'd be glad to help. I mean, I'm not here to point fingers and, you know, damn you all. I want this to work and be efficient and well done. And, and we haven't had that for quite a while and I would even be very glad to help make this a smooth operation that is good for the town and good for the public.
Thank you for offering to provide some insight and some input to that. I think that it would be welcomed by Dave, who's the direct supervisor and by the animal control officer. And that's part of how the town generally and the community generally works best is when people who have some expertise to share with us can share with us. We're all basically volunteers and we're not subject matter experts in everything that comes along. But when we have a subject matter, subject matter expert who lives in the town, we're more than happy to learn from them. So we would appreciate any guidance that you would have about equipment or anything else. I'm glad that Tim has been able to start some training from VLCT and that now we're aware of some training at the Academy that may be available in this calendar year.
Yeah, I think it's also quite important that he get the rabies vaccinations as well. He does get bit. Yeah, that, you know, just to have the tigers be there to follow along.
Great.
But, yeah, I mean, Tim or whoever would like to, you know, sit down and have a conversation, just reach out to me.
Sounds like Dave was anticipating that Tim was going to be doing that.
Well, I have no problem with, you know, because as you've seen, we've gone through three animal control officers since the Sheriff Department wasn't doing it. So I would love to be part of that conversation to know that we're all on the same page. But I think it's important for, because there's lots of things I didn't know either, so.
I'd be glad to have the conversation.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Meem. Other questions or comments for the town manager? Anyone on Zoom with a question or comment for the town manager? Can always have a public comment and questions on any agenda item. We're going to move to the agenda item that's specific to public comment and participation. This would be anybody who'd like to bring up something that does not appear on the agenda later. Anybody with an issue that they would like to see discussed or brought to the board. Just the tension that doesn't show up in Agenda Items 5 through 11. Mr. Bill Moore.
Hi, so I was on vacation last week and just wanted to provide an update for what was happening with RAC. Having an opportunity to send something to town manager. Want everyone to know, of course, we have the Brandy Card for coming up this week, starting on Thursday, going through Sunday, out of Esteban Park. It's free to enter the grounds, to get some delicious food. There's all kinds of entertainment rides. It'll be a great time. And I want to commend Colleen for affiliateing for me last week and doing a lot of work around some of our camps, including one really successful camp that she started in honor of a young gentleman that passed away this spring who wanted to work with kids. He's called Joseph Slomo's Trail Builders. And they've been doing work out on the trails out behind Outer Valley and doing great work with a great group of young kids. This week they have 11 kids. Their ribs are growing. They're doing some wonderful work around town. So I want to make sure that Colleen's work has been recognized. Also, I want to let people know too, that I know we're going to have a discussion about ARPA funds and I talked to the board at the last meeting about bringing forward some information around Wi-Fi for downtown. And discussion with the town manager and just looking at the size, the potential size of the money that we're talking about. We're going to put out an RFP for that work. So I'm working on a RFP to put together for that work for downtown Wi-Fi, so we can get some more qualified bids. So I want to take that with form, Tim and the rest of the board of the, our progress on that. Putting out, putting together a RFP and sending it out so we can get some competitive bids. We already have one bid announced, but an RFP process would definitely, I think, make it a little better about the numbers that we're throwing around with downtown Wi-Fi, or at least downtown Wi-Fi. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Others with items that they don't see later on the agenda that they'd like to discuss. Can always go back. So item 5 is the ARPA funds discussion. So we've had a few meetings with the town. At this point, I believe the number is correct, right? Where the anticipated figure from ARPA to Brandon is $390,008.76. And so we've been asking for members of the public to offer suggestions. We've had a number of suggestions come to the board, either in meetings or by phone or by email or through the town manager or in a letter in one case. And so what I did yesterday afternoon for fun was to list off the, at that time, 17 suggestions that we've received from folks. And I developed, this wasn't ready for the board pack at Friday, but I developed a little chart where basically I would list the proposed project here and then I kind of assessed it in five different ways. The first column is, is there a perceived need for the project? Is it a high need, which would get it a green box, a medium, a moderate need, which would get it yellow? Or is there really no need for this, which would get it red? And I'm going to be first to say that this is just, you know, kind of my draft and this is totally open for change. The second column was, is the proposed project got a wide impact? Like, will many people be affected or benefited, or a moderate, or a low impact? Will a few people be affected? Is there a COVID nexus or connection? This is a hard one, but it's one that the ARPA, the ARPA funding is supposed to have some kind of connection to your responding to something that happened during the pandemic or because of the pandemic. And this one, I did find there were a lot of good ideas that in fact, don't really have any connection to the pandemic. There are some things that don't have a connection to the pandemic that are explicitly authorized for spending the money on. So I guess this is a column where it's not kind of a yes or no. And if you don't have the connection, it's not qualified. It's not the case. Does ARPA encourage, authorize, or prohibit ARPA funds to this project? That was kind of a wide range of responses there. And is the money sufficient? If it's green, ARPA alone would cover it. If it's yellow, there are other known sources you could partner or leverage ARPA funds to get. And if it's red, there's no identified additional source and we believe that the, or I would believe that the ARPA money would not cover the cost of the project. So I just wanted to bring this to the board. I'll read off for the benefit of the public and those in the press, the, the kinds of projects that were suggested. One, first project suggested, grants to property owners to do energy efficiency work on their houses or buildings. Second suggestion, loans to property owners for energy efficiency work on their houses or buildings. Three, remove the traffic lights in the center of town. Four, capitalize a revolving loan fund for the economic development of the town. In other words, take the ARPA money, put it into the revolving loan fund. Five, a bike or walking path at one of the schools, Esteban Park, or another location. Six, increase the supply of affordable housing in the town. Seven, provide grants to businesses. Eight, reconstruction of the water and wastewater infrastructure in the Union Street block. Nine, create a community center at the Methodist Church building. 10, build a passenger rail whistle stop station. 11, townwide Wi-Fi slash broadband access. 12, a proposed Neshabie River Park at the Lower Waterfall. 13, electric police cruiser or cruisers slash other town vehicles. 14, an additional town solar array at the industrial park. 15, reconstruction of the Carver Street sidewalks. 16, replace the town highway garage. 17, pave more roads. And then 18, I guess I would add tonight from Mr. Moore's comment, that the downtown Wi-Fi project may or may not fall into a possible ARPA funding stream. So that's, that's kind of what I had. This, this meeting was kind of designed to be a little bit of a clearinghouse and pulling together of the three previous, I think, three, maybe four meetings previous where we had kind of a few disparate suggestions and now we kind of have them at least all in the list. So whether or not the color-coded chart is useful to the board, I just felt at least listing them off in one place is probably useful to public discussion. So I'll open up for discussion. Anybody on the board or anybody in the public with some comments about any of those projects that we listed off? Or questions about whether we think that there could or could not be ARPA funding based on? And I'll say, I'm basing this off of like the VLCT webinar that Dave's been to, right? Tim's been to, and I read the presentation. I was not at the live, actually.
I wasn't at the live. I read the presentation.
You read the presentation also, okay.
Yeah, some of it was.
So questions, comments, public input? Again, it's about a little under $400,000.
Oh, try, man. I think we need to keep it, myself, I think we need to keep it with what we have for infrastructure now. Taking care of that rather than adding more at this point in time. Which would, I guess, can be the?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. I'd really like this chart that you created and I think it shows a lot of the things that it would be really great if we had some in town, but some of them just do not qualify. And I think that's been a hard thing for folks to understand because they haven't watched these, you know, the things that you and I have, Tim, or whatever, with the webinars and stuff and how the money can actually be used. Looking at like, you know, projects that immediately qualify for whatever would qualify for like drinking water and clean water funds, which we know are infrastructure related. I would, I'd like to say like line number 10, build a passenger rail whistle stop station. And as most of you know, like, I sort of was on my soapbox about that for quite a while to try to get Amtrak to come here. Attended quite a few meetings in, a few years back with, not the big guy smoking cigars in the background. So that's kind of what it felt like. And it's not happening. Butch even reassured me again that like, they have, the way the Amtrak has worked is that it's totally a timing thing. And the way that they precisely do their stops, I just were, I was told that last week when I was on the Amtrak ride for, you know, they're opening up the Rockland one again. We're not going here. We're not going here. We're not going to Sheldon. So, you know, it's unfortunate, but that is what it is. I just, I don't see it happening anytime soon, so. But I appreciate everything else. You know, I, I think that looking at like Union Street and, you know, even town highway garage, but I really think, knowing that like what folks have seen, what we've done downtown with, you know, upgrading our infrastructure, that's 100, some of it was 100 years old, that it's beneficial. It's beneficial not only with things look better when we're done, but we see less infiltration, we see less leakage. It saves us money in the long run, no matter what, like, we're not getting fined and we're tightening things up. I think that's important.
Other comments? Chief Perkell?
I appreciate the work you put into that chart. I wish I had it or had seen it properly.
It'll be, it'll be made into the distribution.
I don't know what is appropriate by that chart or not, but I can tell you that two things that resonate with me immediately are being one a town employee and two a taxpayer in this town and having worked in an area that was totally dysfunctional and illegal for law enforcement purposes until we moved. That anything that gets spent or money outside coming into this town on our infrastructure when it comes to wastewater is critical, only because I know from having had conversations about the expense of that. And secondly, the highway garage has had such a dysfunctional space for years and for housing town equipment that the town purchases and expects to have for many years. If those funds could be used for things that reduce that taxpayer burden, I'd be, I'd be on board with that. But again, I'll just take a look at the list and have it put together here.
We're in very early stages here. I don't think anybody anticipates making any decisions tonight. It's just kind of the, you know, starting point for discussion. I know that with, as far as the town highway garage goes, there has been some improvement in terms of the expense, the fuel expense there. Mr. Giles can talk some more about that. And the highway crew seems to think that there was no loss or no harm to the equipment with the change that was made there. So one of the things that we've, has come up at the board level has been maybe not a whole new garage structure, but maybe a kind of almost like a personnel structure for up there so that they have, you know, workspace when they're not actually working on the equipment, but they have some planning space and meeting space, training space, that kind of stuff. We've talked about maybe a separate standalone building or building that might be attached to something that's up there.
Well, and I might add, just speaking for myself, I'm open to a conversation about a new garage function. And we've talked about this before and I just want to make sure that people here as well.
Yeah, there's different possibilities up there.
There's different possibilities and so it's still on the table, so to speak.
So one thing, I think I've brought up a few times with our, with our town garage as it sits. It's this far away from town sewer, which could be, you know, we could easily make that happen. The building, as you've seen, Tim, when you and I walked around it, a lot of the sills are rotten in it. It's an old building. It's not really well insulated. The crew that we have, those guys have done phenomenal things with what, with the infrastructure we have to keep it in really good shape. And I totally come in for it.
Well, and the largest truck doesn't fit in there. That's what they go with.
We can't work on anything, which is difficult. And, you know, we have guys that can work on stuff now, which is amazing. Yeah, and, you know, a few years back, I actually did a tour with our former public works director on some of the town garages and, you know, what, what the needs are now, you know, like, you know, like the really nice Cadillac versions or, you know, like, you know, the Chevy Cavalier versions that are still a lot nicer than what we had. So, you know, I think if we did that, we definitely would need a plan on, we really should hook up the town sewer there and, you know, really clean that, that one, like the green building in front of us. You know, that, that structure we did last year has been amazing to store all of our equipment under a roof. So we're getting there, but it would be nice to build. You know, like, those guys don't have a shower down there, which I think is important. There's no break room. You know, I think we're seeing now that with the department that we have, these guys should have this stuff too. They're doing a great job for us, so.
Do you have a ballpark figure of what it might cost for?
We could easily spend $700,000 on a new drive. That's, that's probably on the low side. That's being, that's, you know, kind of value engineering at that point. We went to one, Starstool. Now, Starstool is like the highway department. There's nothing else there. $2 million they put into it. It's a beautiful garage, you know, beautiful. But that's what their, the bulk of their, their budget is, is highway. We looked at one in Brickport that I think was $700,000, $800,000, which was, was very nice. You know, just simple things like, you know, raining heat in the floor, so when trucks pulling after the plant, like, everything melts off. So you don't have the salt and everything on your vehicles. You know, that just adds to the longevity of, you know, driving our trucks. So most folks don't, they take a toll on the work time, so. Yeah, it could be done. It could be done for less than.
And how about the infrastructure project on the street that has?
On Union Street?
Yeah.
Again, we're dealing with older, you know, that was sort of like the, that was kind of my suggestion.
Yeah, how much about?
We got a sidewalk ramp for it. And that we still have that kind of 700 feet of old sewer water line that would sort of tie in where we left off at Sigma Six and would stop right at Hannaford, just about, just past our entrance. So it's kind of like a logical next step to do a sort of complete street thing there.
And how much of a cost might that be? And how much of a cost might that be?
We're still looking at costs. It's different, like, for how we're spending the money, and this is one of the weird things right now, that I'm trying to figure out how we use this money. If this is something we get, we don't have to hire like, you know, all these inspectors and engineers and everything, because that's when the project goes up. But if it goes to VTранs, then we have to follow that state procurement policy, and we do have to do all that, so. Four hundred thousand dollars doesn't get us far, and Park Street was about 1.6. So, you know, it's a shorter distance, but there's definitely some money there.
I'd like to suggest a proposal that, I'm Jim Emerson, and I'm the new chair of the, right, the energy committee? And we have a...
This is ARPA-related?
Yes. This is suggesting a way to actually fund more than one project actually, from five inspectors to a taxpayer. So, you know, I just wanted to know, I'm honored to serve on this committee and, and really grateful that the select board has set admirable goals for it. Just remind you, those goals are that we're seeking to work with the state of Vermont, that under the state of Vermont's guidelines, which calling, is calling on all of Vermonters to generate ninety percent of the energy they use from renewable resources by 2050, so in twenty-nine years. The other goal is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from the nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety baseline levels by fifty percent in the next seven years, and by seventy-five percent by 2050. So that's a big lift. It's very needed in our time, I believe, and the committee believes that this is a lift that can be done economically and, well, improving our lives. And forgive me for reading notes, but that's the way I do it. So I suggest these goals can be, you know, these goals need to be adopted by, or met ideally by the town, the townspeople, the businesses in town. It's going to take reducing energy consumption, it's going to take, I think, aggressively turning to reliance on renewable electric energy generation. The, from the data I could look at that was available from Michael Shank and others, I gathering that we're, the town, the municipality is maybe five or ten percent of the way there. To get to ninety, we need to do, need to ship things three percent every year towards renewables. Three percent every year. If we put it off, hey, next year it's committing six percent, or down the road, nine, ten percent. The Energy Committee believes that you, with the leadership of this town, can set an example, an example that motivates others in the town to strive for these goals as well. And we can overlook the goals, dabble with the goals. That approach will certainly lead to a failure to adapt to what is, we're facing in this world. Alternatively, we can take a commitment to these goals with the seriousness they deserve, and Brandon can be a leader in this field. Yeah, it takes, I think, a new way of thinking. So with ARPA funds, if we build a solar farm, for example, on the town landfill site, that is approached that the state supports. Dave's been an advocate for the benefit of the solar farm that we benefit from now, and I think has recognized this could be a worthy undertaking if it was found to be economically feasible. And it's what our committee endorses. Dave recognizes a problem with three phases not being down there. It's eight point eight miles away. Not only the free phase cost, but to bring down there, which is probably, well, no one's going to tell me the price, but probably a quarter million dollars. But with the ARPA funds available, a system can be put in place on one phase that's already there for that amount of money. That would generate electric savings of thirty thousand a year. That thirty thousand could, from my point of view, be used to fund the construction of our maintenance building. Could be fun, used to fund the cost, the carrying cost of a loan on, on the, on this, the water lines. And, and the beauty of, for example, if we could build a maintenance garage that's net zero, well insulated, the, you know, kind of doors that are going to minimize the waste. When you translate electricity into heating cost savings by converting the heating system to an electric-based system, you multiply the savings. I'm saving six hundred fifty dollars a year by spending three hundred and fifty on my heat pumps this year. That's substantial. Others have even done better. So what you, that thirty thousand can become greater if we put a system in that is, is based on saving oil and so forth. So the system could be saving thirty thousand a year. If you just did that and saved me one point three percent of my taxes for the next thirty-four years, I would be honored. I'm sure others would as well. But if you also used it to upgrade the town's capacity to serve the community, I think that would be a powerful thing to do. So I'm glad to hear you're not in a rush to make a decision. A, our committee encourages you to take a key step to evaluate this process, which is to file a brief application with Green Mountain Power with a small fee. They will within two days to two weeks, I'm promised, get back with saying, yes, that's a feasible system based on their configuration of, of their power structure and so forth. And then a much more rigorous study needs to be done about the actual costs and the numbers of what it will save. I relied on a contractor that I've dealt with in the past who's well-seated from Rutland that knows the ins and outs of larger systems. And he was the one that came up with the idea of, oh, why not just use the one phase for the kind of fund we have available? And, you know, down the road, maybe there'll be a way to bring three phases and do a much more glamorous project, but... So, two things, I request you rethink this, do some study of it, invite you to engage to the committee to support you in that effort if you, as you wish. And request mainly that you look at becoming leaders in the role of guiding this town towards meeting these goals that I think are so essential to our lives and our future. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Jim. Is the Energy Committee up for a question?
Sure.
I, I don't know a lot of stuff about this stuff. So if you're talking about a project here where there's one-phase power in place versus a, a solar array at the industrial park where there was already three-phase, three-phase power in place, is, is one preferable to the other in terms of?
Absolutely not.
No?
No, I, I think it's just a matter of, what, you know, what's, there's no cost to get involved with the landfill if you already own land. I don't sure what the industrial park land situation is.
It's complicated.
Yes, I, well, that's what I do initially.
With the, with the industrial park?
Yeah.
We still have about four acres left on that lot.
On the lot that we developed?
So, yeah, we're like, I think we're three and a half, yeah, we're, well, probably three, we're three and a half into it. But, so, Jim and I actually spoke earlier, the last week, and, you know, the interesting thing, like, when we looked at doing solar in town, we wanted to do it to offset the rates at the wastewater plant because it's a reuse user. And because it's, you know, a gravity-fed system, so it's smacked out in the, you know, lowest point of the floodplain because that's how it has to work. We did look at the, at the old landfill at the time. We were still doing test pits there, so no one even wanted to touch it. We still have to have like a, a plan for maintaining and everything, which we've gone through. Again, I was, I was last week about that other annual thing, so it might be doable. I just don't know how much we can do there. I mean, that's, you know, it's just...
Okay, I, I...
Like, it's not a flat field, so that...
Oh, it's down a little bit. I understand that's not a constraint, but I, I guess I understood from you that the state had finished their, their inspection program and were happy to have you in.
But we still have to do like an annual maintenance plan with, you know, making sure we're doing the right things. One thing though, like, I don't know if I told you, Mr. Jim, like, when we, when I started, like, I think our, our monthly utilities were like twelve thousand dollars.
Yes.
And just with a lot of things we've done with like, you know, redoing the town office and retrofitting LEDs like upstairs here and things like that, we're down to like, less than nine thousand dollars now a month for... So we've, we've done a pretty, pretty good, significant savings on, on our monthly electric bill. And, you know, with our solar array, that's, that's helped quite a bit. So there's definitely a savings cost associated with it. I, you know, I think we might be running out of room, but it's always nice to see where else we can go with it.
Yeah, I'd say there's a couple of points of concern. One is, we need to go from electric gen, in my view, and many in Vermont who are wrestling with this issue, are saying, we need to go from electric generation being something like ten or fifteen percent of our energy use to forty-seven percent. So, hey, that means twelve thousand now, we're talking about fifty thousand over the next fifty years. Do we want to keep on paying that out the door, or do we want to find a way to, you know, contain it ourselves? And there is a limit on what solar capacity Green Mountain Power is going to accept. Do we want to wait till that capacity is used up, or should we use it now ahead of what's coming from others? I mean, I think we want to be the leader.
Yeah, I wonder if I can chime in too. It's, it's interesting to also put into perspective, Chief knows that whenever there's something on electric police cars, I always send it his way. Kind of keep his brain going for that possibility. And just for fun, I, I Googled yesterday afternoon the electric dump trucks. And after I got past the one that never needs charging, have you heard about this one? This is the one that they fill up at the top of the mountain, and it comes down the mountain, it generates electricity, and then it drives back up and they fill it up again. And so it literally, but apart from that one, I was amazed to find a company now that makes work trucks. And the first one I saw was like a UPS van, which, you know, is all electric. And then I saw one that looked like a moving truck, you know, more like the, the kind of, I see pulling up the Hannafords in the back all the time, not a full semi, but a moving truck. And then I saw one that actually had a, a garbage truck back on the back bit that was all electric, that was a BP truck. I mean, this was past the point of anything like a pickup truck. And the last one I saw of their four was a flatbed with twin axles in the back. And what it really did for me, and which is why I bring it up in context of the police cars, is that this is coming soon. This idea that we may be able to have electric vehicles for more of our town needs, and thus our electric usage now may be just a fraction of the electric we're going to need once we transform our fossil fuel-using fleet over to electric.
And, and heating systems too, yeah.
Well, and heating systems as well. It just heightens, I think, the awareness of electric generation past just our current usage. Thank you very much. Excellent food for thought, for sure. Others with some more ARPA discussion? Neil?
Um, just a, a comment really. You listed however many, fourteen different ideas that people had, seventeen, something like that, and your analysis is in five columns. I'm going to suggest, and it's bolted me to suggest, that we add another column for crossover. So for example, if you fix the water and sewer pipes on...
Union Street.
You can stop the water leakage so that the, the burden on the water treatment plant will go down, our waste treatment plant will go down because we'll not have as much leakage from the hundred-year-old pipes. And as I think a simplified example, but there are lots. It seemed to me that there were several ideas that there would be perhaps significant crossover where you could, you know, use ten dollars instead of getting ten dollars in one thing, you can get ten of, ten dollars worth of two different components, because the benefit would flow. So just wanted to bring that up, that there might be significant crossover between some of these methods.
Thank you. If we're moving toward an end of the ARPA discussion, I did want to say that in addition to the webinar documents, which were super informative as BLCT stuff generally is, they also had a question and answer document, which was quite something to read. It, it ran to many pages the way that they arranged it and so forth. And so these were questions that came to them from town managers and select boards, pretty much. I mean, I'm sure there, there might have been a town clerk or a town treasurer here or there or something like that. But what I take away from that is, without disparaging, honest questions from honest and well-intentioned public servants in other towns in Vermont. I think that what I took away from it was how impressed I am with the, with our town manager and with the way that this board and this community already have started talking about potential projects. There were a number of questions and answers related to uses of ARPA money that I could only describe as being squandering of an opportunity. I mean, there, there were people who were going to take ARPA money and fund stuff that, you know, the check would be written, it would be given to the organization that needed it, and there would be no impact the next day felt in the community. And I'm so pleased and so gratified that the town manager, Dave, and the board here, and the people who've been coming to meetings, sending us ideas. By and large, these are ideas that are going to have a lasting impact, in some cases a multi-generational impact, and I think that that's the best possible thing that we can do. My, my guiding light about the ARPA money is I want it to have the widest possible impact of benefit in the community for the longest possible amount of time. And that's not the only way to look at it, but that's kind of like my frame of mind in looking at it. So I, I just want to thank Dave for kind of guiding the discussion in a responsible way, and I want to thank the board and everybody who's sent in suggestions for, for having what I think are the community's long-term benefits. And in many cases, for having in mind benefits toward underserved sectors of the community too. You know, that, that's, that's also been impressive, so thank you to that, to those who have sent in ideas. Any other more comments about ARPA tonight?
One thing Seth, Neil mentioned, which I think would be kind of interesting to note. So when we did segment six, you know, Sue runs numbers a lot on our use indigenous stuff now that we're building for water too as well. And her and Ray have talked about this a bit, that it looks like there's almost five million gallons of water a year that are like accounted for that never used, like, you know, that was going out, was somewhere, was leaking or whatever. So, you know, that's a, that's a big amount of, of usage. So when we're tightening things up and replacing things that, you know, in one way, I remember when we pulled sewer lines, maybe Mike remembers, when we were working on, actually, maybe it was water, and maybe, weren't you there for that one? We pulled some pipe out that was casted. It actually said eighteen seventy-five on it. I don't know if you're saying that downtown, we're having an overflow corridor, but, no, there's some old stuff there, so, you know, tightening these things up, it has been saved. We're seeing that, you know, when we did Sheenstone Street pump station and slip lined the line that went up to Park Village, like, that was a huge infiltration area there. And it's, you know, we're, we're tightening it up, so we're counting for, you know, more water, more sewer that we're using instead of seeing it go somewhere else.
Or not seen.
Or not seen, right. So that, that is saving us lots of money in the long run on both sides, so, coming in and going out.
So, Mr. Chairman, how do you propose, what process are you thinking, for narrowing this list down to come up with the top three or four perhaps to study more seriously, or even to come up with one? So I, I'm quite open-minded to whatever the board wants to do. I, I felt like the fourth column there that talks about, you know, is this prohibited use, I thought that might weed out a few that are, as Dave kind of said, look, nice ideas, but really not, not possible, you know, with this money. So that was kind of my idea of the matrix was, was maybe we'll, we'll take out some that we can't talk about anymore because we'd be in trouble if we were trying to spend money on it. I, I agree with that, and I see there's five of those, so that gets us down to twelve perhaps. I, I'm wondering if there is an utility in getting us down to like five when we could actually have more substantive pros and cons of each one perhaps, and then, you know, we could go to some kind of rank choice voting to, to find our...
um, you know, we could go to some kind of rank choice voting, um, to, to find our, you don't like that?
Uh, I, that sounds fine. If we wanted to, you know, kind of maybe look at, choose five or six or something to move forward with. My, my suggestion would be, um, rows that have the least amount of red would be good candidates to go forward with, would be, you know, my, my general thought. So if we looked at, um, I mean, number two, loans to property owners for energy efficiency, where wouldn't necessarily be my top priorities, but it's clearly in the spirit of ARPA. Um, so that, that's, that's probably a possibility. Um, other stuff with?
Well, if you take out the ones that are prohibited, then that's sort of five right away. And then you start looking at the ones that have two reds in addition to prohibited. I mean, that might be another way to start to weed out a bunch more. Do you want me to tell you which ones those are?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so the removing traffic lights, um, has two reds in addition to the prohibited. Um, the grants to businesses has two reds in addition to, even though it is off.
Even though it's off.
Um, and those are the only two in addition to the five. Actually, that doesn't even include it. So that's only one more that we take out that way.
Well, I think, um, it, it, it might.
Oh, the builder, uh, passenger stop.
Yeah, unfortunately, that, that just.
Unfortunately, well, there's a lot of these, yeah.
The train station.
So that leaves us with, um.
Well, we'd have to take out fifteen, seventeen.
You have five of those, you got two reds in.
Yeah, I'm not, um, there's, this is just my reds, you know.
Right, no, but I agree, right.
A bike path at one of the schools, like, I think it's kind of shooting a little bit low, um, and wouldn't necessarily have a very broad benefit.
So you, I know I've mentioned this before, we're seeing, like, there's going to be another chunk of broadband money coming into Vermont, which I don't know. And now, I don't know if you guys are watching, like, what's going on. Now, there's a five hundred and seventy-nine billion dollar infrastructure thing that's going to pass through DC at some point, so.
Well, I.
You know, there's still all this money coming in, so.
That was why I was going to suggest that the, um, the number eleven, the town wifi, I, I think your, your, um, opinion that the, um, that it's red for the dollars may actually be more of a yellow, depending on how we combine it with.
Absolutely. And, and, and that was partly, you know, based on, you know, Bill Moore and the Union, Communication Union District and all that identified need and where that would, would be in Brandon, certain parts of town we talked about. So, yeah, that, that could be a yellowish thing.
So if we pull out those doubles, that gets us down to nine. Do you want me to list the nine that I have left?
Yeah.
What interest?
Just the numbers.
Yeah, number one, um, number two, um, number four is, is capitalized revolving loan fund. I'm going to say the name too for the benefit of the people in the obvious.
So it's one and two?
Number one is grants to property owners. Number two is loans to property owners.
I'm not sure the grants is okay.
Right, it's ARPA side of it.
We're not sure about ARPA.
Yep.
Dave wanted to check.
The, um, number six is increased supply of affordable housing. Charlie and I are still going through this, rest of this. Um, number eight is Union Street Water and Wastewater. Number eleven is town wifi broadband. Number thirteen is electric police cruiser. Try not to say that with that too much emphasis. Um, number fourteen is additional town solar array at industrial park. And then number sixteen is replaced town highway garage. And that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Nine.
So those are the nine that, that are, are left when we take out the, the doubles.
I think we could safely add the proposal from the Energy Committee tonight. I think that that.
Location.
Is number fourteen.
Yeah, the location doesn't, uh, doesn't, we're not attached to location.
Oh, okay. So, or land, if I put, or land.
Yeah, register.
Uh, that covers us there. Okay, yep.
And I would, would it be safe to say similarly that you mentioned number eighteen being downtown wifi, that that really is part of the wifi conversation?
I, I have a different take on the downtown wifi than I do on the townwide wifi. I'm less, I'm less excited about, um, the downtown wifi in terms of, um, who it benefits. I don't, I think it's a narrower benefit.
Okay.
But it's, you know, it's obviously, it's obviously ARPA authorized at least or encouraged. Um, and ARPA alone could do it. Like, there's, there's some green stuff happening in that line. So whether you treat it separately or as part of the townwide wifi.
I guess that'd be like, it fits into that extended conversation, because once we start to get details on wifi, we'll be able to talk about it more in order. So should we climb on those nine being our, um, current body of things we look at next?
I think that's good. Cut, cut it by half, you know, we, we cut it by half tonight.
Good start.
Good start.
And what does the look mean?
Um, I guess I'm assuming that each of these nine would have, um, a development kind of like you did with this, that if each one had a, a, a sheet that described its pros and cons and identified its crossover, as Neil was suggesting, to, um, find out where we're going to get extra benefits, um, then we should be able to sit down and, um, and make a decision, yeah?
And what would generate that?
That's right.
I guess each one needs an average. Um, is that be safe to say?
Can I make a comment about this wifi?
Sure.
Every single household in the town should get access to it, not just downtown.
Right.
Forty years ago, cable company came into this town, the select board, oh, you're going to have cable. They ran the cable where it was convenient for them, not for everybody. Nope, not everybody could have cable, just certain people. So if you're going to use taxpayer's money to, to fund wifi, everybody should have it.
Thank you for saying that. For my benefit, could you tell me your name?
Tom Goulathen.
Thank you, Tom. Um, yeah, just so you understand the nature of that, um, line, that item on our list.
Yeah.
It actually is exactly what you're describing. It's parallel to the electrification back in the twenties, where they went that last mile to every farmhouse because they realized that was a necessity.
Yeah.
And so, yes, um, and that's echoing Seth's comment as well, that it's not just the downtown, we really want to get high-speed internet everywhere.
Right.
Even cable TV, there's still houses in Brandon that you can't get cable TV at.
Yeah, my house.
Yeah.
It's going to cost me all thousands of dollars to get people.
Well, you want to toll the road office, they're, they're.
Less than a thousand feet.
Do you want to?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to address the gentleman, uh, so there are line extension programs that not every budget, I know the state put out a lot of information about it during COVID, and that, uh, the utility companies, uh, like Xfinity, that are providing the cable, they have these pros right now, they're providing up to three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars, I can't remember what the number is right now, to do line extensions on top of whatever you might have to add to extend. Just to let you know, you should definitely check into it because there's money that's still sitting, that's been kicking around, to do line extensions for people that aren't connected to Xfinity.
Can you share that with me?
Absolutely.
Because we had them look Saturday, Xfinity, they said they couldn't do it.
Okay, absolutely.
All right, we made progress, and we've got a direction for forward, for going forward. Um, until next time. Thank you. All right, so item five, shade tree preservation plan discussion. Um, Mr. Rafferty's made a comment in his town manager's report about it, but this was, uh, brought to the board by Neil. Neil, do you want to launch us onto a discussion? Or, uh, want us to know what you're asking for, or?
What, what I'm asking for is for the town to, as, as part of the, um, state of Vermont legislation that became effective in November of last year, um, the tree warden is, is kind of limited in his stated goals or, or, um, areas of influence. Um, but I, I think, at least from my perspective, we're moving into a new era of tree management. We've got the basic species, we've got diseases that attack one or another type of tree, Emerald Dash Four, which is not big here, but it's big in other parts of the state, and everybody's keeping, uh, various communities are keeping an eye on, uh, Emerald Dash Four in their community because they have a lot of ash trees that can really devastate, um, the urban canopy for them. Um, that we, as the town's chairman, right, the, a shade tree reservation plan, um, which is not a short-term endeavor, it's going to be probably three or four years to get everything written. And the plan itself is not going to be a short-term cure, it's going to be guidelines moving forward thirty, forty, fifty years, so that we can end up with a tree canopy that is robust and has enough variety so that if we do have a disease or insect that attacks one or another, or where you several, uh, types of trees, that we would have enough other species that would be able to maintain the canopy. And one of the things that, that happened on Park Street was a couple of big old trees came out, and there were no young trees waiting to take their place because we had not, um, had a policy of planting trees of various ages. I mean, we don't, you don't, and I need to, I think Wayne had a problem when I talked to him about this too. I'm not saying plant bigger trees, I'm saying that spread out the planting, so that you plant the same-sized tree, but maybe ten years apart, so that you have, uh, a variety of ages of trees, so that when trees come to the end of their life, there's other trees there to take their place. When trees get attacked by invasive species, that we have some resilience. Um, and I, I, it's not, it's not the kind of thing where you can rely on people's best intentions or what they, whatever they think about trees. I think people need to sit down and formulate a program that will benefit everybody's trees. Uh, the shade tree preservation plan, as I understand it, can extend beyond what the statute defines as a shade tree, which is a municipal tree, or a tree that is designated as a shade tree, does it impact municipal property?
Can or cannot?
Can.
Can.
So if you have a, a, a damaged tree on private property, that the branches are overhanging the sidewalk, there is a public way, then that, that can be designated as a shade tree and be, uh, remedied, trimmed or trimmed or whatever. But I, I think, sitting down a committee of stakeholders, including three people, municipal people, um, select people, everybody would get to, and the tree warden, because this is all going to be administered under the tree warden.
Did you have any, um, Neil, since you brought this, thank you for bringing this to the board. Um, did you have any thought about Dave's contact with the lady, uh, Joanne at the Agency of Natural Resources?
No, that department, I can't remember the name of it, but, uh, UVM.
It's not through them actually, this is through Agency of Natural Resources of the state of Vermont. So.
Oh, I, her name is familiar, I think that she cooperated with, uh, tree warden class that, that just, that just, um, helped. Um, I think that that ought to be part of, you know, you, you, it's most simple form, you don't know what to put where unless you know what you've got. I hope that wasn't too much.
Have, have you had a chance to talk to Wayne about this? What, what was his comment?
Um, it seems to me that he was on board. It, you know, it would not explain it in any way, it would not minimize tree warden responsibilities or duties. Um, and I don't think it would stretch him any thinner than he's already stretched, so I think that that might be a good thing. Um, he, he, he told me that he would not be able, probably would not be able to make this meeting, um, but I asked him to call, did he even say, give it his blessing or not, give it his blessing, I don't know if he did or not.
So, yeah, Wayne and I have talked quite a bit about this, actually, since the Park Street, those trees that were hollowed that needed to come down. Um, and just, I'm going to try to do this like in the, in the, on the, the way that you presented it. So, the trees that we took down on Park Street, we are planning on putting the trees back. We know that we had our, our tree company coming up to brand the stumps up first, so we didn't want to get everything out of the way before we did it. Um, so, you know, Wayne's, Wayne is a retired forester, I mean, he's a guy, a guy's super knowledgeable, and he's, he's great. He's running a produce stand right now, and his, his corn business has gone insane, so he couldn't come here tonight. Um, but I did talk to him after you'd sent the email, and this was why I wanted to reach out to Joanne Gardner, just did a little search to find like, who in the state of Vermont can do this? Like, you know, do we, do we want to hire, you know, an arborist like Burlington does, but, you know, pays him eighty thousand dollars a year to main train, to maintain the trees down? And we can't afford that, you know, we knew that, I knew that. So when I, you know, found Joanne's name, um, and we had, went to a great conversation last Thursday or Friday, um, on what she could do for, for town with, you know, the tree inventory and the shade tree program. And she said, actually, Dave, I'm working on five of these shade tree programs right now with towns throughout the state, and, you know, I can see where it'd be beneficial for, for you guys to do. She's like, I'll come down and train you guys. Now, she, she's very enthusiastic about it, and, you know, definitely looking for some volunteers, someone started an email, um, you know, to, to get involved with us, which is folks that are knowledgeable. Um, you know, that's interesting, just kind of a little history, when we started taking some trees down in segment six, the tree in front of the Douglas house was filled with concrete, had metal rods in it, so we tried saving it years ago. Probably wasn't a great tree, but it was filled with concrete. So, but, as you folks saw, like, there were a lot of hollow, you know, trees that were in bad shape. And, you know, when you start seeing branches coming down, like, for me, and there's folks up on here, it's a liability issue for me, when things fall on people. So, um, but I think getting with Joanne to come down here and do, do this and, you know, to offer the training, I think it's huge and beneficial, and we should take advantage of it. And if we could find a volunteer or two to do this, that would be great. We're going to, we just planted a hundred and ninety-six trees, we should have a plan.
We, we should be able to maintain them so that they all prosper.
Yep.
Um, to kind of add on to your statement, I, I didn't know it was five, I read today that there were ten towns that UVM and the Department of Forestry are working with to develop shade tree preservation plans that they're anticipating they'll be able to somehow shuffle them all together, come up with a template that other towns can use.
Yeah.
Um, but next year. So, this is not, I, 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 I don't want anybody to think that I, I, I made this proposal and y'all have to jump right now. This is something that's going to take quite a while to implement, it's going to take quite a lot of discussion. Um, what's good for Middlebury might not work really well in Brandon, and vice versa. Um, so to, to tailor everything to meet our needs, I think it's going to take a lot of input and a lot of, probably a lot of meetings, and maybe a little bit of effort. Um, and I thought that there were things that we could get started on, like the tree inventory, that we could get started on without having the template to work from. And then when we get the template, and a year, a year and a half, uh, be able to fill in the blanks. And maybe seek some alternative approaches to tree maintenance, which you may not have heard of, it kind of pushed for a little while, a volunteer citizen group to maintain trees, under guidance of our arborists.
I mean, the other thing, I think it might not be a bad idea, is to bring our building and grounds guy into it. He's young enough, um, there's plenty of arborist schools and, uh, trainings that in the future, you could, you could send that tool, and maybe that would be something that your, that our building and grounds guy is going to be able to do, or, I'm looking forward.
Something worth looking at. I, I, I really feel like, you know, reaching out to just seeing who was available, and talking to Joanne last week, like, you know, this is, this is a resource that we really should jump on, and at least start the process. I think it would be beneficial to us, and, you know, at least get the ball rolling and, and go from there. I mean, Neil's right, it's not going to happen in four months, it's going to be, you know, and then we have to determine too, like, do we just talk about our downtown trees, do we, you know, work out, like, in Forestale, I would, you know, we, we couldn't, that whole thing of, like, trees on private property, that's all for another, like, right away issue, that's been a very contentious thing in the state of Vermont now, like, who's responsible for what, and the town maintained right away because the town doesn't really own it, the landlord does. But, you know, if the tree's rotten, the landlord wants us to cut it, but if it's good and we need to cut it, they don't want us to. You know, there's that whole kind of catch 22 there. So, um, I think we really should take the, the guidance of the state that already has these policies in place and bring them here and run with it.
It, it seems like Wayne, um, our current tree warden, um, it'd be great if it felt like he was in the driver's seat.
I think he is, yeah.
Well, and this is where I'm saying, I'm, I'm not sure we need to authorize anything because it seems like the tree warden can make a plan if he wants, and if, if, you know, um, people want to help, great, I mean. want to help, great, I mean, but if, and if he isn't going to take the ball, that then leaves something like you to oversight, because you're kind of the...
Sort of him anyway. But Wayne does not have the time to do it. There's, you know, he's, he's, he's very good at what he does and really enjoy working with him. I mean, you know, he knows when he's stretched too thin, and I think at this point right now, he's stretched too thin. But he's saying that, like, having a policy is not a bad idea.
So if he'd like for us to go make a tree plant sometime?
Well, I think we could get someone to come in and help us with that, to do it, you know. I don't want the select board to do it, not standing sarcastically, but, you know, have someone like Joanne to come in and help us with that, to really make sure we're doing the right thing.
All right, excuse me, I think there might be enough people in town who are interested in preserving trees, that they would volunteer to do this.
One thing I found interesting when I talked to Joanne last week was, you know, she does, she totally understands that there are trees that have an expiration date, and as we saw, again, through the cycle six and whatever, that sometimes they need to go, whether, you know, how old they are, what, if they become dangerous. As long as we have a plan to replace them moving forward, that's really the way. Or when, you know, a tree is getting to that point of its life expectancy, maybe we get rid of some of the lint and not pour concrete in it and put metal rods in it, like fifteen years ago, so.
You know, I think as Neil said earlier, we need to be able to take and, you can't, you can't plant all one species. You know, you're going to have to have somebody, what I'm starting to learn in the sugar department is that if you want to cut all your, if you want to cut all your, but your maple out, then your disease is going to go to your maple. So it suggests that we leave certain...
Well, didn't we lose like all the Dutch oms on Park Street, hundred whatever years ago, on the, all the big Dutch oms?
Not just on Park Street, I think it's going down throughout the state.
Well, there's, there's two parameters, I think, for maintaining a urban canopy. One is a variety of species, and the other is a variety of ages, because all, regardless of Dutch oms, these, all the oms when they get to like ninety-five years old, they're always going to start dropping branches. So have some younger, have some older, you can take care of them and minimize risk and maximize the benefits that you get from trees, which is people look at streets, so, look, that's leaves everywhere, it's wonderful, I want them over here.
So was the, was the pleasure of the board, or what, are you saying the board doesn't need to have a pleasure at this point, because it's going to develop with the coordination of the tree board and you...
I would love to follow up with Joanne at the state. I think her resources are invaluable and that we could really go far with them.
And you don't need anything from the board?
Anything.
It sounds like from what Neil said and the other discussion, that, you know, the inventory is the first step and that that's even, that precedes any shade tree preservation plan authorization that, that we as the select board would have to say yes to, would have to even authorize. The way that this is written, this is the tree warden and a legislative body may adopt a shade tree preservation plan. So if it sounds like the inventory comes first and that's just kind of a routine thing that the town can accomplish, then it seems like it's the consensus that we want to embark on that, with whatever data you can, you can get from the state. Is that, is that fair? Other comments? Okay. Thank you, Neil, for bringing that to us. It's good to be aware of this. Thank you for attending the VLC, who was VLC two trained or not VLC two, VLCT training about tree waters?
There was VLCT training.
I mean, it was from them or someone else.
It was from this UVM extension.
It was from UVM extension. So you went to, Wayne went?
Wayne went.
Yeah, so that's great, three people in our town with enough interest and dedication to inform themselves of it, thank you. Item seven says green fleet update.
Yes, I have a brief sort of thing to hand out to take on. So this is the, the second year of me doing the green fleet, and for those who don't know, the green fleet policy is an effort to accumulate data of energy use in town so we can see how much of our carbon footprint we have. And I think the hope is over a long period of time, we would watch that carbon footprint decrease. So this is the second year I've been doing this, this is actually four years' worth of data, because I originally reached back two years to get historical data. And these numbers are, go up and down for different reasons. And so I can't say that I know exactly why this is, but I've come up with a couple of observations that I thought I would share with you. First of all, I will say that these four graphs that are on the front page are sized in the way they are because they're all using the same scale. And so when you see some numbers down near the bottom, that's because they, they are much less than the, the one that's tall. So the first thing I would draw your attention to is that in the tall graph, that's the overall CO2 emissions for the town of Brandon. And you can see that FY 2018, it was three fourteen, FY 2019, it went up to three twenty-four, FY 2020, it was at three twenty-nine, and in this last year, it went down to two seventy-eight. Now, of course, part of this is COVID. But it's also interesting to consider, I have four items that I wanted to just draw your attention to. The town hall propane dropped by ten point seven metric tons of CO2, mostly because nothing happened in the town hall. And so we didn't use very much propane. So that's an easy one to explain. The diesel usage dropped by eleven point eight, that's the one just below the overall usage on that chart. It went from one forty-two to one thirty. And I, this must be reflective of which projects you were doing that year, because I can't explain why diesel would go up or down. One thirty is actually an average of the last three or four years, if you look, sometimes it's one forty, sometimes it's one twenty, and so it's bouncing around. The highway garage is perhaps the one I have my theory on. At the beginning of the fall, I dropped into the highway garage and talked with Sean about how the garage works energy-wise and the temperature in there. And it had been the habit to leave the temperature on seventy pretty much all winter to keep the trucks so they were able to be worked on, and so the snow would drip off them. And after talking some, there was an opening to put in new thermostats. And these programmable thermostats were able to drop the temperature certain times to save some energy. And I also just raised the awareness that, you know, if the trucks aren't covered in snow, perhaps you don't need to keep the place so warm, because sure enough, it doesn't snow all the time. And it's possible that we saved as much as twenty-four point five metric tons on the garage, which is almost a fifty percent reduction. It's, it'd be welcome to see next year whether it pops back up for some reason, and we'll try to explain that as well. And then, of course, the last one that I had was the chief, the police gas usage drops marginally by two point six metric tons. And part of that, I think, we understand, is because we have fewer policemen out on the road this last year. And so, you know, these numbers aren't, aren't magic, but, but they are, hopefully we can draw conclusions from energy choices we're making and, and our carbon footprint. The, that's the long and the short of it. I hope to get better at presenting this in a way that's perhaps more publicly usable. As I say, this is only my second year of accumulating the data, and with the energy committee ramping up, I just recently discovered I can get electric usage. And that's going to be another, that the final element in the town's carbon footprint. And electric usage footprint has a lot to do with how GMP produces power. And as they get cleaner, we get cleaner as well. Are there any questions? Suggestions? Feedback? Great buttons, great information.
How's the rec department? Did you check that?
To tell you the truth, the rec department is tied into offices and spaces, so I don't have things on a per department basis.
But you put in there that we bought an electric Bushmore.
I'm looking forward to see that come through in my results.
I, just, just say no, like, nothing to do with town. I'm like selling those things left and right, and I have no, like, I can't...
You don't get a commission?
I think Bill has one now, one of his friends has one. That's got one.
Well, you told me you got battery-operated leaf blower?
No, I don't have a leaf blower. I said, no, my leaf blower will still like lift it off the ground. I have like the weed whacker with like all the attachments, so it's, it's nice, I love it.
Good.
We're good.
Well, thanks to Elaine for co-lating this information, which she was co-lating anyway for building purposes and tracking purposes, and thanks to you for analyzing it and bringing it together in a way where the board can draw some useful information from it. So thank you, Tim. Any public comment on that, green fleet? All right, so item eight, request to reconsider a class four portion of Town Highway eleven to be reclassified or discontinued. You have a map and a tax map and a bunch of the statute that would apply. So Mr. Ashton, would you introduce this to us?
I sure can. We have the folks here, the McLaughlins and Ralph Hager, who are landowners on this portion of road. Ralph did call me a week or two ago and discuss this. Elaine and I pulled this data together of, you know, looking at Steinberg, this is on Steinberg Road. And to see if, you know, the board would entertain at least doing a site visit to determine if we should discontinue this road or not. As you know, we haven't used it in, for as long as I can, you know, I've driven through it once, but I was only out of curiosity. You know, they've had some issues with a lot of trash being there, I think, if you remember, we, I can't remember how many tires we called out of there for Green Day last year, but it was a lot. So I know Ralph had expressed that they were looking at, you know, take it over more and open the fields up for, for more farming and things like that. So I don't know if these guys have anything that they want to, or want by, but we figured it would be a good conversation anyway.
Sure, do the, do the property owners, landlords have any, anything they want the board to know?
The only thing that I'd like to say is that my son's the seventh generation that owned three-quarters of that property. It's been their family since seventeen eighty-four. They've paid taxes on a hundred and five acres up there or more for two hundred and thirty-six years. And...
It's an impressive front.
And I have been married to their mother for fifty years, and the fifty years that I've been married to their mother, I saw one town truck go through there.
Were they lost? Were they lost?
They might have. But it's, it's a matter of...
But they have gone out and maintained the culverts and stuff for...
They maintained the culverts, but it's, but they, you have to tell them that there's something wrong with them, because they never go there.
Because they didn't place the culvert down with Steinbergs fifteen, twenty years ago, and they went over and put some gravel in the back road so that it was accessible for the two homeowners.
I think we did something to it last year or before, I remember Sean was talking about it, so.
So, can you help me out with the map on the first page? So Steinberg Road, if I'm coming from the east and heading in, first it's black, and then it's dotted black and white, and then it's just not.
Interesting thing with this road, so the black portion is actually a class three.
Class three.
The dotted version is a gravelled class three.
Gravelled class.
And then the highlighted area is the class four. And it goes to the intersection of Hollow Road, which, interestingly, look at it, the northerly end of Hollow Road is the same highway number as Steinberg Road does, and nobody seems to know why. So my guess is that other than that southerly portion of Hollow Road was added on years ago.
So the request from the landowners is for the class four portion, is that right?
I believe so.
To be discontinued.
Does that mean there wouldn't be any, like, ability to walk there or sort of like to ride a mountain bike or something like that?
They do it now.
Well, I realize that, I'm just wondering if, I'm curious from a standpoint of recreation or value to the town, whether there's any...
So, Tim, if we discontinue it, it basically gets split down the middle line to the adjoining landowners.
Maybe because private property.
It was private property.
Private property on both sides.
Yeah, I mean, it's private now on both sides.
Yeah. So, want to do a site visit, is that the next step?
So, I kind of prepared something, just in case you guys so choose to do that. I did draft a notice, the notice for the, you know, the site visit, and left the date blank for August of, you know, which I think August ninth is our next meeting. If you guys, we've normally got it an hour before our select board meeting, so if folks wanted to do it at six PM, I figured we could meet where the class four section starts.
Okay, so, so not at the Hollow and section, Hollow Road section, but...
No, in Steinberg.
In Steinberg Road, yeah. Six PM?
It's up to you guys.
August, is that fine with the board?
Yeah, if I'm not... That's something in the door yard, right? I mean, the, the last house there is...
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you came with us?
I'll be there.
Okay, yeah, because I've been there before.
Can you use Bill's car?
Another thing, these wonderful GPSs that they have now, truckers, we've had semis over there. There's absolutely no place to turn around. A couple of them drove around the house, they ripped the wires out the house. Yeah, I mean, Sean would tell you that, we had him up there. It, they just tore the wires around the house, I mean, it's just ridiculous. There should be a sign down at the foot in their roots.
Not through the road.
Not through road, dead end or something, but it's just ridiculous.
Well, we've put signs up for our cover bridge and coming trucks that we...
And that doesn't make any difference either, does it?
And if I watched a box truck come down Fair Road, you know, put a culvert in on Churchill Road one time too, I thought it was a myth, and then I saw what happened, it was kind of interesting. You guys want to do the ninth?
Were you involved in that tree, did you get that, no?
No, that was, that was, it was a chimney yard.
Is it August ninth at six o'clock, does that sound good for a site visit there, at on Steinberg Road, at the point where the class three road ends and the class four classification begins? Six o'clock, site visit to contend, to consider discontinuing the class four part. All right, so you've got that paper for us to sign and we'll notice it appropriately. I've done one of those for a couple of years. Any public comment on that before we do the site visit? Public is welcome at site visits, public will be welcome at the, after the site visit happens, we come back and we have a meeting specific to it. So all kinds of public input available.
I can read that a little bit if you want us to.
Sure.
So what is, we'll meet on the ninth of August at the site, and then at six thirty following or however long, depending on what the conversation is, we'll meet right here for a public hearing prior to the select board meeting. And then that means our, our criteria for properly noticing that.
It's Mario Blay, her cats.
Thank you for that. Fiscal, there's a warrant for the year we just concluded and a warrant for the year we just commenced upon. Was the pleasure of the board?
I make motion to approve. You are twenty-five, nine, or, you know, twenty-one. The amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Is there a second? Motion for Mr. Wyman and a second for Mr. Coolidge, the prior year warrant of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, fifty-eight cents. Any discussion or questions on the bills in that warrant?
Just to let you know, there's a solid one on there, which is basically the final invoice balance of our order.
Do they have the balance in trade order?
So that's where we're at with that. If there might be one after, we'll see, but it's pretty close. I mean, it's more for the brick slab out here, so that was the additional.
So will there be, will there be a need to visit the one percent fund to fund that balance and change?
I do not believe so, I think we're good right now.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Other questions, comments? All in favor, are ready to vote, all in favor of the prior year warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no, you guys have it. Item two, the present year warrant.
Make a motion to approve that, ninety-eight thousand, three hundred, twelve dollars and seventy-five cents.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Motion for Mr. Wyman, a second for Mr. Coolidge. Any questions on the present year warrant as presented? Unheard, all in favor of the warrant as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Aye, opposed, say no, it's unanimous, you guys have it. So what we'll then have is, we have two executive sessions on the agenda, but before we do that, are there any public announcements that anyone would like to make for benefit of the community? Anything for the good of the town? Okay, so if not, what we'll do is call the board to recess at 8:30.